Good evening, everyone. Brandon, ready? All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of interacting the general business of the township. Today's date is August the 10th, 2022. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building, and it is also being offered in a live streaming format. The meeting will be available on the township website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silence reflection to honor the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. That is my motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. All those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose, please record a unanimous vote. We wish to note the absence of Commissioner Susan Ratzavong, Commissioner Ratzavong, and I think she may be the first sitting commissioner to give birth to a baby while in office. We want to get send out congratulations to Suzie and to her husband Troy and to both of their sons on their new addition, their first baby girl, and I believe her name is Tori. Suzie, if you're watching this, congratulations, and we're so happy for you. Okay, so. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of their August the 8th, 2022 workshop meeting to discuss one collective bargaining manner, matter, and one real estate litigation matter. It is our intention, oh, and this is for all of our residents that had experienced damages to, due to the hail event of last year, and especially to our senior residents. That is my intentions to host a town hall style meeting to assist individuals with the submission of insurance claims and home repairs associated with that hailstorm that impacted portions of the Springfield Township last summer. A date and time for the event will be announced in a very future date, so please keep your eye out for those residents that had sent in notices and inquiries to me. We will let you know of that meeting shortly. Mr. Taylor, has there been any correspondence or remote comments received?
Yes, sir, we had two public comments received remotely. One was from a Windmore resident who requested direction on the installation of a private well. That individual was referred to the Montgomery County Health Department, who administers that program. And we had a second comment from an Orland resident who requested additional information about public meetings that Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and/or Aqua PA may be scheduling in the future regarding the possible sale of the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority wastewater treatment operations. That individual was notified that Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority has taken the month of August off. They have not scheduled anything at this time. They anticipate doing so in September. And once that information is known, we will post that on our website.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Tonight, we will have a presentation of our trail plan, and I, we are calling upon Ann Nygaard and Brian Olzak of the Montgomery County Planning Commission to conduct a short presentation regarding the process by which the township-wide Trailmaster Plan is to be presented. Ms. Nygaard, floor is now yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. So. As noted, I am presenting on the scope of work and timeline that is expected for the Springfield Township Trailmaster Plan. The work is being conducted by myself and Nygaard and Brian Olzak. So the goals of the plan, as stated in the request for proposals that was sent out and in the scope of work that we responded with, was to identify routes that maximize connectivity between key destinations, including parks, businesses, and neighborhoods in an equitable manner. We want to find routes that are safe, inviting, accessible, and easy for users of all ages and abilities, and then to create a list of clear implementable projects for the township to consider going forward.
Say that the head sec, because I did get some inquiries from people that were concerned. This is purely aspirational at this point.
Yes.
But this is a kind of a, as you, as you noted, just sort of routes that would be maximize the most benefit for the community. But by no means is this the creation of a plan that will be implemented.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Strictly aspirational.
This is aspirational. Any alignments that we propose will be general. It will, further work will need to be done to produce final alignments and engineering of those alignments. So this is an aspirational guiding document, not a requiring document, shall we say. We did also want to address the benefits that trails bring to residents of Springfield or of their locations. Generally speaking, we've found that property values increase from being near a trail. National studies have found across the country that property values increase from five to 10% within half a mile of a trail. Where in Montgomery County, we've found that homes within a quarter mile of any open space that is protected are worth 4.4% more across the entire county. And speaking to trails specifically, homes within half a mile of the Green Ribbon Trail within the area are worth 13 and a half percent more than homes further away that are comparable. Additionally, trails allow residents to have safe, accessible, and low-cost recreation opportunities. And a robust trail system would allow residents' children a safe way to reach their friends' homes or schools on their own or accompanied by parents, getting out and walking, enjoying nature. A robust trail system helps residents reach destinations within the community and allows, and trails have been found to have a positive effect on life expectancy in some studies. Trails can also become a meeting place for the community in this increasingly disconnected age. So trails have a wide variety of benefits for residents, which is the reason that we, which is part of the purpose of this plan. However, when talking about a trail system, there's a number of different kinds of paths that we envision as part of the trail network. There is your standard hiking trail, narrow, unhaved. Generally, what comes to mind for most people when they think of a trail. However, for a trail system and network connecting homes and destinations, shared use trails are also relevant. So paved paths that bicycles, wheelchair users, strollers, those who are maybe a little less able to exert themselves can use. Additionally, bike lanes are generally part of a trail network, as are neighborhood greenways, which are smaller, more calm streets, and low-stress streets, which have low traffic volumes, low, low degrees of danger for anyone who may be walking in the street where cars are infrequent enough that you, you can let your kid play and walk in the street. All of these kinds of paths are part of a trail network, and all of these paths are worth considering as we look at the trail network and an aspirational view to a future trail network for Springfield. As part of this work, there is an 11-member task force that is guiding our work that is assembled of three township commissioners, Commissioners Sandish, Cobb, and Ratzavong, two members of the township staff, Brandon Ford and Emily Crook, who is the Director of Parks and Rec. From the school district, we have Neil DiFranco, who is a member of the school district board, and two youth representatives. We have a representative, Patrick Hines, from the Environmental Advisory Committee. We have Adriana Smythe from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have Jerry Quill here from the Planning Commission, and we have Melissa Brooks of Friends of Cressham Trail. The project team from Montgomery County Planning Commission is myself and Nygaard, who is the community, community planner for Springfield Township, and Brian Olzak here tonight, who is a Senior Trails and Open Space Planner, as well as Bill Hartman, who is the, who was unable to be here tonight, but is the Trails and Open Space Manager. At the end of this project, we have five deliverables that we will be providing to the township, an inventory of existing trails, including an analysis of usage patterns based on public inputs that we are able to gather. This will include trails in Springfield and trails in adjacent municipalities within easy walking distance of Springfield. We will provide the township with a gap analysis based on location of existing features, key destinations, demographics. So where do people live? Where do people want to go? Where can they not do that? We will provide a list of recommended trail improvements, so locations where connections can be made to existing or planned trails, and we will provide a map showing those aspirational improvements. We will also provide a rough implementation matrix, which will contain the recommendations, potential project phasing, recommended strategies for development, rough order of magnitude costs, and potential funding sources. This will be, as Commissioner Cobb noted, aspirational, not necessarily saying they will be fixed, but it will be a starting point for the township to work from. At this time, we are in August. We have begun, we have put together public input documents that we will release upon approval of the Board of Commissioners, and we have conducted inventory and mapping absent the usage patterns on, on our own. We intend to have a public meeting in late September, September 29th, to gather public input regarding the, regarding this plan. Following that public meeting, we will be able to assemble a more firm list of our recommended improvements and projects and produce that proposed map, after which we intend to have a second public meeting in the January timeframe to gather feedback on the draft and ensure that the public has seen it, knows what we're recommending, has a chance to comment on the aspirational document. And then we hope to bring it to the Board of Commissioners by February for your approval. As I noted, we've conducted the existing inventory, though this inventory does not have the usage patterns. We've found seven different trails in and around Springfield Township. The first three here on the map are existing trails in Springfield Township. That includes the school trail here, which consists of paved sidewalks and shared use trails, which connect the high school and middle school just across the street through an underpass across Fort Washington Expressway. There's a section of the Cressham Trail, which was constructed as part of a recent development off Willow Grove Avenue and New Bold Lane. And there is a small section of Forbidden Drive Trail, which runs along Northwestern Avenue on the grounds of the Morris Arboretum on the Springfield side. Additionally, among the trails in proximity to Springfield are the Green Ribbon Trail here in White Marsh Township, a section of the Tookany Creek Trail in Cheltenham, the Penbrin Park Trail in Jenkentown terminates in walking distance of Springfield. And then there is the tail end of the Forbidden Drive Trail in Philadelphia. This is your existing trail network. We've also identified three parks in Springfield with internal walking paths that exist or are planned. That is Cisco Park here, Sandy Run Park and Pizziak Preserve. And then there are planned parks that we know of in Mermaid Park and the Walnut Avenue connection between these two parks up here. Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Yes.
One of the exciting things that gets people very excited about trails is coming online. And is there any update on the Green Ribbon Trail? Get people excited about imminent prospects of that.
So, so we actually have a meeting planned with, with Township Staff. I think it's for next week to discuss our, our work to begin the design for that trail. So we would probably put out an RFP for Design Services sometime this year. Design usually takes about 12 to 18 months, but in this case, since it's, on the shorter side, would probably take around 12 months. We take into account stormwater, grading, you know, different construction methods that we need to take into account. And if there's any bridges that are necessary, that is involved in that process as well.
That's specifically for the structure of what's already.
Yes, so actually between, so basically between this here, and so actually you would make this connection ultimately. It would be likely within Springfield Township. We, at one time, were contemplating work in Philadelphia County, but obviously, being Philadelphia County, Philadelphia, we need to take the lead on that. And they got to a point where they weren't ready to proceed with that. So we believe that we'll stick with the Montgomery County side. So likely, it would be a side path along Northwestern Avenue or may also take a part of Morris Arboretum, along the frontage, that is. But again, that's sort of the plan with the design phase is that we figure out the more specific alignment. That's also in 90% design right now. We're working out some last, a last few easement and land swap negotiations with landowners. And, you know, we always sort of hope that we get to the finish line in the, in the next couple of months from when we explain it. But, but we believe that by the end of this year, we'll be ready to go to construction.
That, that trail is fully funded, isn't it?
It is, yes.
So it's just, it's a matter of just creating it, right?
Yes, of just building, right.
I, I just had a general question, because we talk about this often in here, in our discussions. The, the county's requirement required width of a trail. What, what, what is, is, is there a required width, is there not, or?
It's a good question, so.
I require a wider trail.
I know you do, I know you do, yes, but normal people may not need.
So what you're probably talking about is a shared use trail. These are the trails that the county maintains and builds. And these are sort of the gold standard for accessibility, as well as for the number and types of users that you can have on them. So most of the time, our minimum width is 10 feet. We can go up to 12, 13 feet. And that's, and that's because it encompasses two people abreast and also several different types of mobility available on those trails. You know, we can be flexible on some of these other items here. The hiking trail being pedestrian only, sometimes equestrian uses, you know, can be a bit more flexible. But for our purposes, we tend to, when we're building a trail ourselves, that we stick to the shared use standard.
Okay, thank you.
No question. Is there any consideration or component, at least in the aspirational sense of this scope of general connectivity among neighborhoods? And may have that relates to roads that have a lack of crossing opportunities?
Yes, and so that's sort of why we bring these different types of trails sort of into the mix. So, you know, we're not just going to build share use trails all over the township. I mean, it's a cost thing, obviously, but it's also, you know, what's right for the, for the right condition. So there might be places where a bike lane is more suitable. And we're actually looking, in some of the analysis that we're doing, we're looking at where are there already bikeable streets? Typically, these are the very low-stress streets, neighborhood streets, as you mentioned. And seeing if we can't make strategic investments to places which are not as safe and sort of bolstering up the, the accessibility of those certain streets and then making those connections much more easily, instead of just building a bike lane everywhere or a shared use path everywhere. So it's, it's sort of seeing what the context is and making those sort of strategic improvements. But yes, that's a good question.
Make sure, you know, whoever falls very effective back and almost highlighted like your food deserts in some community where they don't have access to so heat map, locations maybe that weren't accessible to green areas or parks.
Yes, the trail access map.
Yes, that, that was data that was collected and processed by DCNR and the Trust for Public Land, where they essentially used actual walking infrastructure. So the presence or absence of sidewalks, as well as density, population density, and demographics, and sort of paired that with the, the parks of a community or the county, and were able to see which places were sort of disproportionately not within a walkable access place. And so we'll be using that type of data to make these strategic investments as well.
And would the aspirations of the trailing system be to go from Endor all the way to the Art Museum in these connected trails?
That could be one, one priority. Part of what we imagine for a public workshop is gathering sort of that qualitative data of where, where do people want to go? And do they want to be able to walk or bike to the store or to school or to, or between, you know, neighborhoods? And so we'll be looking for that type of data through the public engagement process. And so, so we're at a good point that we sort of know what exists in the township. We know where the, the major destinations would be. We just want to know more about where, where people want to go. And so ideally, it's to maximize connections, you know, while minimizing the investment necessary.
In your experience, the data that you have, have any trail systems or the sort of increased trail systems shown an increase in crime?
No, and that's, that's a frequent concern that we see. And, you know, and very frequently, you know, we will come upon residents who may be apprehensive at first at the prospect of a trail, you know, in their vicinity. But a trail ultimately is just like a sidewalk. It's, it's a public accessway. And so it essentially acts the same way as a, as a sidewalk. Northampton Township in Bucks County did an exhaustive study about the, the literature concerning, you know, whether there is a connection between a rise and fall in crime and the accessibility that trails provide. And they found categorically that, that, that there was no correlation essentially.
I believe, didn't they find that there's a decrease in littering when a trail is put in?
Yes, yes, they did. So that's, so this comes from the, the idea of sort of more eyes on the streets. There's more, there's more people walking up and down an accessway, which may be otherwise inaccessible or hard to get to. There's less instances of loitering, there's less instances of, like Anson said, littering and other sort of behavior of that, of that sort. So it actually, it sort of increases safety in, in certain respects. And, you know, we, our Parks Department manages our trails. We have almost 90 miles of multi-use trails, and we, we very rarely have a condition where, you know, we have any crime or vagancy or anything like that. You know, on our trails, the local police forces do patrol them. And, and again, they're wide enough so that the vehicles can actually drive onto them if necessary. So, so they are accessible by all emergency personnel.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you for that presentation. Ms. Ny, the guard and Mr. Allzack, thank you very much. We're very interested. As, as Commissioner Wilson stated earlier, we talk about this often. I, for one, hope that it goes through before I have to actually use a gang getting through there. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you again.
And Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just a confirmation from Mike or Brandon. Will we be sending out the survey information following this meeting? Do we have to vote on that?
I'm not quite sure what the schedule is of, of part of the committee.
That's live as soon as we release it.
The, the survey was distributed this evening in your.
Yeah.
And it's going to go to everybody who's on our, currently on our list.
Oh, yeah, we'll send out a general announcement, kind of summarize what the presented today, as well as links to the survey.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from the boards? Okay. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee begin, reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Right, not seeing a mad rush to the microphone. We will proceed with our committee reports. As the Cultural Resources Committee, which I chair, there is no report. So I will turn the report over to the Chairman of our Community Development Committee, Commissioner Brer, Standish, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. So I actually do not have a report for myself tonight, but in Commissioner Ratzavong's absence, I will read her report. So I have two announcements, and the first concerns Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I'd like to announce that there presently exists a vacancy as a member of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee advises the Board of Commissioners on the goals and objectives of the township's parks and recreation programs and serves as a sounding board for the recreational needs of our residents. The committee meets on the first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM at the Springfield Township Building. And I believe they're off in the summer, but you know that. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving as a member of the committee are encouraged to send a letter of interest or resume to the Attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, Pennsylvania, 19038, or email mtailler@springfield, excuse me, at springfieldmonco.org. That's my first announcement. Next, concerning. That's my first announcement. Next, concerning our recreation center, I would like to announce that it is the intention of the Board of Commissioners to create an ad hoc steering committee to be known as the Recreation Center Advisory Committee. The purpose of the committee is to assist the township with the creation of a master plan for the future use and possible renovations to the recreation center and to provide technical advice and recommendations on the selection of an architect. The committee may consist of members of the Board of Commissioners, Township Staff, immediate neighbors of the Recreation Center and other community stakeholders. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving as a member of the ad hoc committee are encouraged to send a letter to of interest or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor Township Manager, fifteen ten Paper Mill Road, Windmore, Pennsylvania, one nine zero three eight, or email M. Taylor at Springfield Montco.org. Those are my announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner Standis for reporting on both your committees and also, uh, if Commissioner Resavoff in her absence. Next, we will have reports from the Chairman of our Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Peter Wilson.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm reporting on the recycling tonight and pleased to announce that, uh, during the month of July twenty twenty-two Springfield Township residents recycled a hundred and forty-eight point seven tons of materials with a shareholder participation rate of sixty-seven point four percent. The net cost to the township was eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, we will now have our committee reports from the Chairman of our Public Works and Facilities Commission Committee, Commissioner Michael Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items this evening. First is resolution number one five seven three for the sale of the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority wastewater assets. On July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority announced that it had received a formal offer of one point one billion dollars from Aqua Pennsylvania to acquire its wastewater operations. The authority, authority presently serves as the township's wastewater provider and its sale to a private for-profit enterprise has a potential to increase sewer rates for Springfield Township residents. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number one five seven three, a resolution opposing the sale of the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority wastewater assets to Aqua Pennsylvania. The board may consider rescinding its opposition to the proposed sale if assurances are provided regarding future sewer rates, customer benefits and enhancements, and the use of the sale proceeds to benefit all existing authority customers regardless of geographical location. That is my motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion?
Um, Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Cobb.
As, as we sort of discussed on Monday, I guess my, my only concern is just how little we know at this point about, you know, sort of the devil that we know in Bucks County sore and water and then the other devil that we know in terms of Aqua. You know, I think that most residents would probably agree that their experience with the new, uh, with, with our existing um, sewer providers, sewer system providers has not been exactly exemplary. Um, but I don't know, I just don't know if any of us can know enough about what things would look like with, with Aqua. I know we discussed, we had someone come to the meeting on Monday who seemed to know a lot. Um, and I guess that we are going to explore what he has to say, but I guess, I guess pointed, I guess I'm looking for a point of clarification. Are we going to vote tonight then on just sort of uh, not supporting the sale, but kind of putting it on pause until we can gather more information?
I, I believe that the vote tonight is to be in, uh, to be in unity with the other, uh, townships within the, uh, county uh, in order to oppose the sale at first, but I believe that this, uh, uh, resolution can be rescinded once we get more information. Is that right, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, that's the way that the motion was written, that the board could later rescind their opposition as more details come out. Because as you pointed out, Jonathan, we have very few details about how the proceeds are going to be distributed at the moment. Um, what the rates are going to look like. Um, the, the announcement came out in early July or mid-July. Uh, was followed up very quickly with one, uh, meeting from municipal officials in which there were very few details offered. And then two public meetings, which were even, you know, like a day or two later. Um, so Bucks County is going to take the, the, uh, the month of August off, as I reported earlier. Uh, there'll be opportunities for additional public comment. And, uh, a number of municipalities and municipal managers that I've met with are attempting to organize and try and obtain some better answers uh, regarding how the sale proceeds might work and what kind of enhancements we might see as customers, if any, through a sale.
But, but what's clear now as of right now is that most of those municipalities oppose the sale?
Absolutely. Everyone that I've spoken with and, and there was good attendance from all the municipal managers.
Any other comments or concerns?
Just a quick comment, Mr. President. I mean, I would, I would encourage people, the public to stay informed and and, um, you know, listen on this, as Mr. Taylor said, they may not take any action in August, but uh, just raising awareness of the issue, reaching out to your, your county elected officials, reaching out to the Bucks County Commissioners. Yeah, as we go along, just because, you know, the, once it's privatized for a for-profit, it's never coming back. So, um, you know, Commissioner Cobb brings up points about, we don't know it at all yet, and, and I agree with that. But, you know, if it does go down that path, it's not coming back. And just from a a trend, the way society is going with more and more privatization of public assets, uh, I think it's, I think it's concerned. So I just encourage people to, um, stay, you know, listening and informed on it.
I totally agree with both comments from Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Cobb that our communities should definitely keep their eyes on this item, uh, especially after what the majority of the town, well, a lot of the township went through. Uh, when we made our sales and after that first year, uh, I know a lot of calls came in from residents uh, concerning their billing. So please, uh, as both commissioners, uh, did state it previously, please keep your eye on this item. Are there any additional comments and or concerns?
Just one question. There was a gentleman, uh, at our meeting on Monday that, um, was fairly eloquent about, about this. He seemed to, as Commissioner Cobb said, know a little more about some of this and had done more research than some other people. I, I believe his organization was coming out of Norristown and he said that he was going to, they were sponsoring a couple of public workshops and they had a um, it's a website address that we could, you could go there and sign up. But do we have that web, that, that website or?
He shared it with the public on Monday.
Yeah.
Stop the sewer sale.
Yeah. Stop the sewer sale dot com.
Not to be silly, but stop the steal.
Yeah, it was stop the sewer sale dot com.
Okay.
So residents can go to that site if they want to, uh, make sure that they want to be more well informed. That gentleman was very eloquent as Commissioner Standis said.
And we have done a good job, uh, through our township management of updating the website as well so that it is right there on the landing page. We'll kind of continue to update that as information comes in.
As more information is made available, for sure.
Great, agreed. Okay, so, uh, any other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, uh, I'm going to abstain from voting. I think that we know so little at this point as to what the final, uh, uh, picture will look like, that it's premature to, uh, to, to oppose, you know, this premature to pass a resolution, uh, you know, condemning the, uh, an action for which we know so little details. So, uh, I will be abstaining and, uh, it was the same way to abstain or not vote for it.
Any other comments or concerns? Seeing none, there's a motion at, on the floor that has been seconded. All those that are in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those that are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Well, then you didn't abstain. You're abstaining.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain from, uh, from the vote as well for some reasons as, uh, Commissioner Wilson, because I agree with him. Uh, certainly no friend, uh, or, you know, I don't appreciate, um, a lot of the things about our experience with, with Bucks County, uh, water and sewer, um, but just don't know enough about, you know, what the new um, potential owner looks like. Um, and so for that reason, it's, we're not knowing anything about it.
So you're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so are there all, any that oppose? Okay, see, Mr. Uh, Mr. Taylor, please note a, uh, vote of four, uh, four A or four and two F extensions. Okay, I think I got that right. All right. Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, last item is for the Shade Tree Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint and bring to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. This brain's new term of service shall expire July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That is my motion.
Okay, a motion has been made. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All that oppose, say nay. Please note a six zero vote.
That will conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We will now hear from the chairman report. I mean, our committee report from the Chairman of the Administrative Physical Affairs and Zoning Commission, Commissioner Jonathan Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first tonight regarding the bill listing, uh, I moved that the Board of Commissioners approve the July check reconciliation in the amount of one million twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. And the August bill listing in the amount of five hundred and five thou, five hundred and five thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-three cents. And that's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
Great. Um, second, regarding our telecommunications policy. I move that in accordance with section seven oh two of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, the Board of Commissioners adopt telecommunications policy for meetings of the Board of Commissioners and its advisory committees. The policy sets forth the following limited conditions for remote participation by a board member. One, exposure to symptoms of or positive test result for COVID or other highly transmittable disease. Two, illness or temporary disability of a board member under a doctor's immediate care. Three, care for the ill or a newborn immediate family member. Or four, a, a medical emergency. And that's my motion.
We, uh, there's a motion on the, the floor. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any questions and or concern?
I, I would just like a point of clarification. If Andy could please give us an example of how this would work, I would appreciate it.
Sure, um, I guess. Uh, just by way of a little additional background, um, this is a written policy that's being put in place pursuant to the First Class Township Code, which, um, if you're going to have remote meetings or, excuse me, remote participation by a commissioner, you have to have a formal written policy to do so. In terms of how it might work, if one of those situations arises that Commissioner Cobb described, um, the policy sets forth, uh, the procedure by which you would notify the township of your participation remotely. Um, and then from there, you'd be able to participate in the meeting as long as, um, everybody in the public could hear you. You could hear them, uh, you can hear votes and you can cast votes.
Mm-hmm. But, um, but with regard to the quorum, okay? If there are only, if there, there's seven of us normally, if, if we need four for a quorum, there's some language in the bill that talks about if, if, if one member want, who is sitting, sitting present, you know, in the township building, for some reason is disqualified. I can't understand what, what, what that would really look like disqualified, uh, then I, my understanding is then and only then can the remote, uh, commissioner, uh, be accepted as a, to, to form a quorum and be allowed to vote. Is that correct?
That, that's, that's correct, but let me unpack that, I guess.
Yeah, please.
So, um, I, I think the policy states, consistent with the First Class Township Code, that you have to have a quorum physically present in the township building.
Right.
Um, only a maximum number of three commissioners could participate remotely. Um, however, if there were some disqualification, and I'm not going to surmise what that might be, but some disqualification from, from voting that would apply to one of the commissioners who was present, um, you would not lose a quorum in that situation. So other words, your meeting would not, would not be void under those circumstances and you could count somebody who's participating remotely to make sure you maintain a quorum for that particular matter.
And they could, and they could vote.
And they could vote.
Remote.
You can vote regardless. You can vote regardless, correct. But that's the quorum issue that I think you're describing.
Yes, yes, yes. It was just unclear to me as what an event would be that would disqualify what's a quorum certified.
Suppose you're in this scenario where you have four present and one of those four members works for Aqua.
Yeah.
You're considering the, the motion that you just passed. That person might abstain from there. So he's disqualified.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
Interest. For a conflict. Situation.
And, and just another point of clarification, I was under the impression that this change or this, the adoption of this thing, which was also meant to address our concerns about uh, being able to have a, have remote votes in situations where, you know, it didn't fall under a state declared emergency, but maybe a local emergency prevented us from getting together. And so that enabled sort of a virtual quorum to be put in place in that, in those situations.
So that, that situation is not contemplated in this particular policy, but we clarified in the policy that nothing would prohibit you from doing that. If you were to declare a local emergency or a local disaster declaration, which as we discussed on Monday, would normally be accompanied by additional draconian measures, I'll call them, such as remote working, um, closing of public facilities, including the library, uh, cancellation of pub, parks and recreation programs, things of that nature. But that's covered separately under existing state legislation. This covers only the remote participation of an individual board member or up to three for those very limited circumstances that were cited in the motion.
And I should make note that we hopefully that this would never, we would never have to use this ordinance. Um, but there was a lack of it in the prior ordinances where it did not address if for a natural disaster, uh, to do these, this building for some reason a tree fell, God forbid if that happens, knock on simulated wood. But just if anything were to happen to this building where we as a board could not get together altogether uh, because of some disaster, because of COVID or whatever natural disaster, the board that could still then conduct its business, uh, for the township.
If we passed this last month, Commissioner Ratso long could have.
She could have joined.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It was thirty days. Yeah.
He could have joined. Suzie's not, so once we, if this passes, Suzie, call in.
Yeah.
So we, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any more additional comments or concerns? Okay, all those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose, please note a six to zero, uh, vote and Suzie, you can now call in. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cobb.
Great. And finally, uh, regarding the zoning hearing board agenda for the month of August. Uh, the zoning hearing board will next meet on Monday, uh, August fifteenth. Is that correct?
Yes, it's about, it's a week earlier.
It's a week earlier this month. Okay, so take note, it is a week earlier. Uh, normally it's that last Monday of the month, but uh, they will meet this week, this month on Monday, August fifteenth at seven PM, uh, within this Springfield Township Building, in which they will hear the following applications. Uh, the first, the application of Cleto Mari.
Cleo to Marie.
There you go. Cleo to Marie. Cleo to Marie LLC, owners of the property located in nine ten Willow Grove Avenue in Windmore. Uh, the applicant, the applicant has requested a special exception, uh, seeking approval to redevelop the property for use as a medical office space on the first floor and a total of six apartment units on the upper two floors of the proposed new building. The property will comply with all of the coverage and parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. The property is currently zoned within the B one Business District of Ward number five of Springfield Township. And I might need your help on this one too, Mike. The second application is for Mr. Sun, Sanjeev Jain. Owner of the property is located at forty and forty-two Grove Avenue in Flower Town. The applicant's request to revision to a condition of the zoning hearing board approved, approval issued on November fifteenth, twenty-ten, for these two parcels. In November of twenty-ten, the zoning hearing board approved a garage connection between the exist, existing garages on these two properties. A condition was placed on this approval that stated that if one or both of the properties were ever sold, the connective structure would have to be removed. The applicant, the applicant has requested that the connective structure remain since he purchased both properties. The properties are zoned within the C Residential District of Ward number one of Springfield Township. Again, that meeting will be in this room on Monday, August fifteenth, at seven P M., and that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Next, we will hear our committee report from the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner James Lee. Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several items this evening. First is regarding parking restrictions on Willow Grove Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, section one oh seven dash thirty-two, schedule nine, parking prohibited, to prohibit parking on the south side of Willow Grove Avenue from a point twenty feet east of the Douglas Road crosswalk to a point of eighty-one feet westerly thereof. The police department has recommended the implementation of the parking restrictions in order to ensure that pedestrians can safely cross Willow Grove Avenue at this location, and that access to an adjacent bus stop is provided. That is my motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All that oppose, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
Second item is regarding a stop sign on Windmore Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, section one oh seven dash twenty-eight, schedule five, stop intersections. By authorizing the installation of a stop sign on Windmore Avenue traveling in a westerly direction at its intersection with Traymore Avenue in Windmore. The police department has recommended the placement of the stop sign in order to eliminate a safety hazard that is created by vehicles parked too close to the intersection. That is my motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion? Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all that are in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All that, all that oppose, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
My final item, Mr. President, regarding entry-level police officers, I move that the Board of Commissioners extend conditional offers of employment to Michael Porcini Junior, excuse me, Perini Junior of Philadelphia and Tyler Donnelly of Philadelphia as probationary police officers with the Springfield Township Police Department effective September fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Condition of employment is successfully passing a physical and psychological examination. Mr. Perini is a graduate of Springfield Township High School, Go Spartans, and Mr. Donnelly is a graduate of Archbishop Brian High School, Go Raiders. Both gentlemen are graduates of the Philadelphia Police Academy and are presently employed with the Philadelphia Police Department. That is my motion.
A motion has been made. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Although, are there any questions or concerns on the motion?
I'd just like to make one comment. I have to say, I'm not sure the rest of you feel this way, but some of you have had the pleasure of sitting through several years of these interviews, and I must say, they were probably two of the most impressive interviews that I've sat through with the hiring of our police officers, and they're going to be a great addition to this community and this police department and this township staff, so.
You're here.
I do agree with you, Commissioner, Commissioner Maxwell, on the excellent selection that our police chief brought in regards to these two candidates. So are there any additional comments and or questions? Seeing none, all that are in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those that are opposed, please say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. That concludes our committee reports. So once again, the board is open to public comment. For anyone that wants to have anything to say to the board. Not seeing, oh, yes, sir. Please come to the microphone and please give us your name and address.
My name is Gerald Quill, and I'm on the Planning Commission of Springfield Township. My, this is just a banker's question, but are the new police officers taking a big pay cut?
No.
No? Well, that's very interesting. Philadelphia police are pretty well compensated, so I'm glad to hear that.
We are police officers. We, we look for qualified officers, and I can honestly say that they are compensated according to.
I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar with their current salaries. I don't, I don't have that information. But our entry-level police officers do start at a slightly lower rate than our full patrol officers. So it's likely that they are, but both opposite, that's probably a testament to their, I guess, desire to work in Springfield Township.
I think they're both maybe four or five years there.
In Philly?
Right, three, two and three.
Two and three, okay. So they would have been lower on their scale anyway.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comments? Seeing sun, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't worry, sir.
My apologies.
I just had a, wanted to do a quick commendation to our township management, police chief and members of the police department who put together a fantastic community event a couple of weeks ago on a very hot summer night, but our participation in National Night Out this year was a huge success. And I know that a ton of work goes into putting that event on, and it really was, I think unanimous in terms of how much families, kids, everyone enjoyed that. I know a ton of work goes into that, so thank you to, again, to our management and our police department, our officers who got in the dunk tanks and did a lot of fun, exciting stuff that night, gave some good tours of the police office, so thank you.
Agreed, agreed. I'm looking forward to the year that Mr. Ford and Mr. Taylor will take their part in the dunk tank. I will be practicing my art.
This guy.
By the way, you want to do it this year?
So any additional comments from the board? Seeing, seeing none, I will entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any objections? Please note a six to zero vote. We are now adjourned.